Welcome to County Fair on Waycross Community Media. I'm Government Programming Coordinator Dana Gagnon, and today we have in our studio Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me back.
I appreciate your willingness to come down and to keep us connected. And of course, you've been down here before.
Yes.
And we'll talk about that also. But one of the things I think I want to do right now is it's the beginning of a new year.
Yes.
It is almost exactly one year from when we were introducing you as the newest Hamilton County Commissioner and all of the information that came with that. Even your swearing in was different.
Yeah.
So let's start by talking about that.
Yeah, you know, after the election, obviously, we had this is the first election where we had COVID. People had to vote differently in the primary and then the general. They were voting with masks. We didn't have the vaccine then. And once I won, I had, you know, just very thankful to the voters. I had over 200,000 votes. This election, I believe, had one of the most votes for Hamilton County Commission races in terms of people participating. And I said, wow, we have so many people that, you know, helped with this, volunteered. We got to have a swearing in. And so I was told that we couldn't have one as a traditional one inside. And I said, you know, let's take it to the community. And so we had to be creative. I come from an entrepreneurship and marketing background. I said, how can we do this where people can be safe but also can participate? And so we took it to the parking lot of New Prospect Baptist Church. And we had it outside and we brought the stage. We brought the flags. We brought everything. We brought Hamilton County to the people. And it's interesting because as we continue to talk, it kind of set the tone for my administration and in my office. So we took it to the people. People could drive in. I said, let's do it as a drive in and people could stay in their cars. And we had a special station that they could listen in inside their cars. They could turn on their own heat and they could hear it. They could see it. And the only people who were outside was myself and the people who swore me in. And we also had it where it was streamed and we were able to make sure if you couldn't come, you could also see it that way. So we really wanted to make sure that we felt the people was the reason for me being here. And I wanted the people to be a part of. I felt like it was equally there swearing in. And it was just a wonderful thing. We had, I thought, pretty good weather. Of course, it was a little cold, but we had pretty good weather. We had a great turnout of cars that were, you know, we had a traffic jam getting there. And people, instead of clapping, you honked your horn. And when we got done, we had a drive through reception where the bag, we gave you a bag that was already pre-done with the cupcake in it and everything. And we had the person wiping between the speakers. But we had to think about every little detail. And I spent majority of my holiday time figuring out, how do we do that? And I was so happy to have Waycross to be able to capture it so that more people could be involved. But we said, hey, we got to do it different. And I think it indicates kind of what our administration was about. People wanted me to come down to the county commission, shake it up, do things different, be creative and not just, you know, go along. We might, these are different times. We had to have different measures. And so that became the beginning of what we now are calling bringing resources to the people instead of people trying to find the resources. In other words, we're bringing Hamilton County out of the walls of downtown Cincinnati Court Street and bringing it out to the community, to the neighborhoods, to the townships, to the different cities so that people can have access to us.
As far as this being a good time to recap 2021, it's kind of a nice place to start with. Of course, it's a starting point for you because it's when you got to start as new Hamilton County Commissioner. But it's also a starting point for, hey, we're in a new world and we have to do things differently. But we still want to connect the residents to local government. We still want to make sure that they don't feel like it's all happening away in a dark room somewhere. Of course, that is my whole purpose here as Government Programming Coordinator. So I'm excited about anything that helps that happen. And we got to help you with another part of that project because in March of 2021, Waycross got to host you right here in our studio for your Live Relief-a-thon. Tell us about that idea and that process and how that came about.
Yeah, so once we had the swearing in, a swearing in is all about, you know, here's the things we said we're going to do. Now we're here, we're ready to do these things. And what we found is obviously COVID didn't go away. The need was great. People needed help, rental assistance. We had landlords saying, hey, I don't want to put people out, but they can't pay. Their hours have been cut or many people lost their jobs. We had situations where people in their homes and saying, hey, I need help to keep my home. Utilities were hitting them. So everybody was getting hit from so many areas. And so we had to immediately roll up our sleeves. And what I found was that there were a lot of different things to help people and it became overwhelming. Go here, we've got this or go there, you might see it on the news. I heard something about this, where do I go? And we saw people who had never needed government to help them now need government to help them. And they're like, where do I go? We had all these different websites. It was not mobile friendly. First thing we said was we need to create a task force dealing with COVID, the economic side. We've got the health side, but also the economic side is hitting people at the same time. So we created a one-stop portal. I said, but we can't stop there. And the one-stop portal now, 513relief.org, it was new. It was one of my ideas. I said, hey, let's have this one-stop portal. It needs to be mobile friendly. How do we not have mobile friendly? And so we were able to do that and we've had almost 100,000 people visit. We got one place you go, one place that can give you everything that you need. But then we said, how do we promote that? So the idea was, I said, man, it'd be great. I know a telethon. And telethon is something, obviously, when we're trying to raise money and people are on the phones and there's a lot of help. I said, how do we do that in reverse? And so I came up with this name Relief-a-thon. I created it Relief-a-thon. And I called you up and said, listen, we want to do something different again. How do we now have a relief-a-thon that would be broadcast? And we want to broadcast it live, would have over 20 partners, would have United Way with a live call center. We'll be doing Zoom and in-person interviews. No commercials, so you know, we got to really know what we're doing. And I wanted something where people now, let's promote and learn about everything that's available. And we covered everything from if you're a renter, if you're a homeowner, if you're a senior citizen, if you need food, every single thing. We even had a suicide hotline, where do you turn? Because a lot of people being inside, it was really affecting their mental health. And that night, and we guaranteed a 48-hour callback. That was historic. And that's something that we want to, we had such great feedback from it because people said, man, I could tune in, it could replay, and I can now hear some of the questions. And we even took questions. People could give us questions online. Some of the questions that we could repeat. And people said, man, that was so helpful because I didn't know all of this was available. And we also tracked it because everything we do, for me, we must track. We must have an ROI. We must have return on investment. And so we were able to get a report and 700 families were helped that night, just in two hours. 700 families were helped. Two people were helped who were thinking about committing suicide that night. I couldn't believe the impact that we made together and also in partnership with Waycross. I said, we got to have some partnerships and I want this countywide. So no matter where you live in Hamilton County, you know what's available. And then you can pick and choose, this is what I need or I don't need. Or you could pass it on to your neighbor, to your church member, to your family member about what's out there and available. So I think this is going to be an annual thing because people ask me like, we need to do a relief-a-thon all the time and we could tweak it. But this just gave us a chance to communicate with government and in a way that was interactive and the way that we use the technology in order to do that and bring in partnerships because we can't do this alone. Everything we do is partnerships. And I remember you saying, we did it and we still had three minutes at the end. So we did a great job with that. And I've had people from other places saying, wow, how did you guys do this type of relief-a-thon? So that was the beginning of, one, we got a portal that we can send you to. You could get on your smartphone. Two, we introduced a new hotline that we were going to be using later. And then three, we brought everybody in kind of unveiling, here's what's available. And we did it in a way with communications and technology and partnerships with Waycross.
I think one of the things that impacted me or impressed me the most about that project, the 513, the Live Relief-a-thon, was that it wasn't that you had to make up a whole lot of relief programs from scratch. The programs themselves existed or were beginning to exist because they were getting created because of the pandemic and the needs people had. But it was difficult to connect people to them. And there was a whole group of people who had never asked for help before and didn't even know they could ask for help and didn't even know that there might be a program that covered that particular need. So the fact that it was a partnership of so many different, sometimes transportation sort of was part of the program. Like you said, mental health, rent assistance, food assistance, but also so many people who need help. If you need, for instance, rental assistance, you might need also food assistance. You might need, you might need other things.
Right.
So to be able to call one, just the process of going individually to each organization and trying to find out who has assistance is daunting and it's just impossible for some people.
Yes.
So to be able to create that. So I want to say 513relief.org is still up.
Yes, it is.
As new programs are added.
Yes. We add it right there and we give one message. And our communications director, Bridget Doherty, is keeping that going. And then we also have where you can apply online. So some people who are tech savvy say, hey, I want to apply online. They're able to do that and we're constantly upgrading that. But that's an easy one place to go. Everybody tell you, so you don't have like five, like you said, different websites. Because we have to understand, we got to deal with the mentality. I mean, this is daunting as it relates to COVID. It's a beat down. It's a negativity. It's, you know, it's all that you're dealing with. Some people dealing with grief, some people deal with being a fear as it relates to their children, what's going to happen? And now you're trying to figure it all out and you're trying to survive and make sure you can provide as well as stay healthy. It becomes overwhelming. So if we can help put it on one site at least, so now you got the information and you're able to use your smartphone, because most people use their smartphone for a majority of things they do. But then also the relief-a-thon allowed us to go deeper. Where the person could come and explain these different programs. And then we measured it. It helped us decide what other things do we need to put funding in? Or what is the need out there? We're guessing the need, but now we got to hear from people. And we saw rental assistance was number one in terms of our calls. Small business was number two. So then we started to look and say, hey, we got to put more into small businesses because there's a need out there. So we added the money, but where is the need? And we want to make sure that we're putting the money where the need is. Now, the one thing is Washington has released the money. But if you don't get the information and the money to the assistance to the people, then it's almost like a breakdown. It's like most people, if you go to your phone, and that's what I told people, we're in a society now where people go to their phone and order their groceries. People go to their phone and order their food and their thing is bringing it to them. And if you ordered it, but you have no delivery, that person doesn't deliver the food, then it's a breakdown. And so I think with us, we want to make sure that we are delivering. You see on TV, well, Washington said they had rental assistance. And Washington said they got assistance for helping people, but where is it? And that's where we come in and we make sure that those things are delivered. And the way we make sure they're delivered is when people know, here's what it is, here's the qualifications, here's how to apply and make it as simple as possible in a world that is super crazy right now.
I want to take a second on that because something I talked about just recently also with Commissioner Dreehouse is that county government fills gaps. People don't always think about intentionally about county government and what it does. We see on TV, we see a lot of national government, like you were saying. Washington said they have this. We see state government. We, oh, this is happening in Columbus, how does this get to us? That tends to feel very distant when you're a resident, you know, clicking, watching the news report and trying to figure out, they said relief, how does that connect? County government is that connection. You, as a county commissioner, can find out what Columbus is doing. But also you're local enough to get phone calls from Hamilton County residents and find out what kind of relief Hamilton County residents need, which might be different than other parts of the country. Which is why it's really key that this 513relief.org website, and there's a phone number also, right?
211. 211.
I'm just going to repeat it so that if you're watching this and you're thinking, I didn't watch the relief-a-thon, I still want to know, yes, it's still up. Yes, there's still help. And if you don't see a category for what you think you need, let them know because that's how they know what kind of programs need to be created next. So 513relief.org or just call 211 and it's the United Way set that number to.
Yep.
And it's the same idea. It doesn't matter what kind of help you need, they'll help you connect to the right organizations.
Yeah, help you navigate. And you know, as we're talking about, you know, my one year in office as a county commissioner, I think for me it helped because I started out as city councilperson and then was a vice mayor of the third largest city in Ohio. And then I went as a state representative. So I kind of saw, and I was on a finance committee, so I kind of saw that process. And you're absolutely right. Now, at the county commission level, people say, well, you know, you did the state, you did the city. I mean, what is the county commission? Too many people really don't understand how important county government is. County government has always been the safety net because our largest department is jobs and family services. So we've always been the safety net, but we also do so many other things. We do economic development and we help with different, our municipalities. We help them with economic development, the funding for that. We, for example, Wi-Fi was a big deal. I mean, when we got hit with COVID, we saw how unprepared we were as it related to technology and Wi-Fi. So here they were saying, kids, you know, students have to do home learning and we didn't have Wi-Fi available. And we did these hotspots, but there's areas in Hamilton County that didn't have this. And so one of the things in my first year, I didn't anticipate, but I got feedback from, for example, the councilwoman of Lincoln Heights, Linda Charles-Jeter. She brought up, hey, how do we get Wi-Fi? Her bringing up that question, we were able to create a program, a quick program, very quick, over $600,000 and have different municipalities, the smaller municipalities, be able to bid on it. And so it didn't just help Lincoln Heights with public Wi-Fi for the first time, but we helped Deer Park, we helped Chiviet, we helped Mount Halsey. A lot of them were the first time ever in Lachlan with this Wi-Fi as we began. And one of the big things for me is for Hamilton County to be a smart county, to have Wi-Fi and this type of technology throughout the county. So it doesn't matter your ZIP code, you are connected to the future. And so again, these are the type of things, you know, she saw the relief-a-thon and she started, and she brought that up, hey, what about Wi-Fi? And so we started to look at it. So a lot of these ideas are coming from the communities that we serve throughout the county. And we're all in this together as one Hamilton County. But these are the type of ideas, and you're right, county government, we're the rubber meets the road. When I was at the State House, I would approve bills and get funding, but I didn't really get to see, did the rubber meet the road? Now I get to see the senior citizen that we helped or I get to see the municipality that we helped. I get to see the person with the rental assistance. So I guess that was the best way to describe it is that the county is where the rubber meets the road.
Well, and speaking of rubber meeting road, that's another part of how you're connecting. And you have a 513 relief bus so that if you cannot get to one of these places where some of the help is happening, it's coming out to communities. Talk about that project.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's interesting because as we talk about my one year, we talked about the swearing in and we had to bring it to the people. And I think it created, you know, what direction my office was going to be trying to push the administration to move toward. Because like I said, we're in a society now where people can order their food and it's brought to them through the grocery store. They can order food from restaurants, it's brought to them. So now we're in a new society where people's used to mobile, bringing things to them. And so the NAACP President Joe Mallory, who used to be on the Forest Park City Council, we had a town hall. I hosted a town hall with Governor Dewine early on. And the town hall was how can you get the vaccine into minority communities? And so we gave them three things. One was that we thought, you know, one, we wanted to get it into churches where churches now could have access to help with the vaccine. And second, we said we wanted to get rid of the preregistration because that was hard for people who might not been tech savvy. And then the third thing, we said, why can't we have a bus that goes around that brings vaccine to the people? Well, we didn't have a model. I started researching and I found Hampton University had a model where they had this RV that was retrofitted. It was going around to bring the vaccine. It was the only one in the country. I actually flew to Virginia to see it and it was a showstopper. And they partnered and gave us the information. And I came back and I said, listen, let's do something similar, but I'm going to add a twist to it. I want it to be one-stop. I want it to be Hamilton County on wheels coming to various municipalities. And I don't want it to be just COVID. I want it to be the way we do business now. And so the 513 relief bus was born. And the governor even in his address that he would have every day at 2:00 was asked about it. And he said, he indicated that Commissioner Alicia Reese is right and we're going to do it. And so he did help us initially with vans and then we moved to this tech bus. And so the bus is, was a partnership with UC Health. At first, we had their nurses. And I said, let's bring the economics as well. So it's a one-stop. And even in some locations, let's bring the mobile free store food bank. So now when you come in, you got your food if you need it. You've got, you could register for rental assistance or home mortgage assistance or any programs that we have, they're registering right there. They're not telling you to go home and get on the computer. They're registering you. And at the same time, we've got the nurses there to give the vaccine or the booster and all of that. And so it's a model that I have not seen anywhere in the country. And I got other people calling me from around the country, how did you guys do it? Why don't we have, I got other counties calling me, can we get your bus in our county? I'm like, wait a minute, this is Hamilton County, right? So it has been amazing. And we have, we had a partnership with UC Health, but we're actually building a bus. And it's going to be coming out this year, where to be a permanent one. And so maybe it's the vaccine this time, but it might be dental health next one month. It may be helping youth get checkups. It could be a variety of things plus all of the economic help. So this has been great for us because when we go into, we've been to 79 locations in Hamilton County. We've been to 28 different ZIP codes. I think I've only missed like four locations. And we've been to as far as Clees, we've been to Forest Park twice. We've been to Colrain Township twice. We've been, we've been to inside city of Cincinnati. We've been everywhere.
On the website, on 513relief.org, you have a schedule of, this is where you'll find that bus next. So that if you are thinking, gosh, I wish I knew where it was going to be, you can keep track with that.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it was, it also builds relationships. So it's like, man, Hamilton County cares about us. They're coming to my neighborhood or they're coming to my community or my municipality. And we've been going where we've been invited. A lot of these places have invited us to come. And we've even, when things change, for example, when the schools and younger, they reduce the age for the boosters, we were able to, we were the first to pull up at schools. We partnered with different schools. So we also were able to have relationships and people could ask questions. There may have been people who were skeptical and they could ask a nurse and they're not rushing you. So it's been a great thing. But the other thing is we found out that there's a lot of people that really need help. People are in their cars at 3:00 in the morning waiting for the bus to show up at 10:00 a.m. And so we get to see that there is still a great need. And that helps us as commissioners where we start to go back and look at our budget that, hey, there's a need here, this is what we heard. And it helps us input their, have their input as a part of our policies.
Well, I want to hit a few more things. We could talk about the 513 relief bus because there's so, that could be a whole program in itself.
Yes.
But since we were doing the wrap-up, let's make sure we hit a couple more of the things that you highlighted when you did your wrap-up for this year. And one of them is homeowner relief.
Yes. One of the things we saw, we had a lot for rental assistance. And that's still important and we want to keep that going. But we also had a lot of homeowners that came to the 513 relief bus and said, what about homeowner? And we have $40 million that we put for the first time ever for affordable housing. But we took $5 million of it and said, let's help homeowners now that's already in their homes. And so with the homeowner package, we now will be able to help homeowners who need help with utilities, water bill, gas and electric bill. We also are able to help with back mortgage, those who've been affected by COVID. We're also able to help with back property taxes, those who've been affected by COVID. So we have now a package for homeowners, which we didn't have before. And we got it because of the feedback we had from the homeowners. In addition to that, we set our property tax rollback. The voters had, you know, gone to the polls in the 90s in terms of the stadium. And they were promised a 30% rollback. Well, the law says each year we have to vote on it. Well, based on our budget this year, we were over our projections as it relates to sales tax. We're over our projections as it relates to our quote-unquote rainy day fund. And so this is a good time when the homeowners need a break. The property tax, 30%, I really wanted to push that and I pushed for it. And we were able to get 30%. The administration said, go for 10. I said, no, based on what, we looking at these numbers, I've been on the budget before. This year we can afford it, let's give the homeowners a break.
Sure, and some of these are things that, no, it won't be responsible to do them every single time. But right now is if it's in the budget, this is a really great time for homeowners to help us with our budgets too.
And I think the thing that people need to understand is different from when I was at the state. State is two-year budgets. You get the, you know, you do the budget every so many years. You've got the, your local budget's two years. The county is every year. So we only got a one-year budget. So every year we look at it and if we could do it, we're going to move forward. If we can't do it, then we communicate that with the taxpayers. But each year we get a year, we get a chance to have a bite at the apple. We can't go beyond one year anyway. So, you know, again, no one thought sales tax would be up, you know? Who would have thought in the COVID? So those are the kinds of things that I think I like that are different in the county that we don't have in other governments.
And one of the things you talked about hearing, when we did the relief-a-thon, hearing a lot about the need of was small business relief, which wasn't necessarily on the radar early on, but talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, small businesses, I come from entrepreneurship, small business. Small businesses are getting crushed. Two groups are getting crushed. You got the middle class, they're getting crushed because there wasn't a lot out there to help them. We now are able to help them. Then you have small businesses, you know, your restaurants, your local small businesses in the neighborhood, your storefronts, your, you know, bars, all kinds of rest, all kinds of small businesses, and that's the future. And so one of the things we wanted to do was have funding available. And we did have funding available before I got there. But also there was a lot of people who had never had to go to government for help, didn't know what was out there, hearing about all these different programs that you're hearing. You know, they get the national, you know, Washington has this and so and so. Where is this help? So one of the things we did was host a relief day. And it was a drive-through with the Urban League of Greater Southwest Ohio and HCDC, who we hired to do small business relief. And people could come and they could drive in and they could help them with any questions that you have, help you break down, what is this application? And we ended up with 500 people at this event. We had more people participate than ever before and they actually qualified. And so we put $11 million towards small businesses. Before we only had been doing $4 million to help stabilize them. In addition, coming up this year in the budget, I said, let's have the county's first ever office of small business. We want to own that. We want to be the place where small businesses come. They can grow here, they can invest here, they can start up here. And we want to have... And we want to have um, uh, be able to have a tally of how we're doing, uh, how do we compare to other counties? We want to be number one for small business, that is the future. So uh through this uh bad situation, we were able to have a grant program that got us relationships with small businesses, where we now gonna have an entire small business program, the Office of Small Business in Hamilton County, that'll be kicking off this year, first time ever.
I think this just keeps coming back to, people are needing help that never needed it before.
Yes.
Which means they have no idea who to ask, where to look. Um, and, and we talk about small businesses, we're talking about businesses that are too small to have a grant writer on staff.
Right.
Or um just a whole department to just keep, you know, a legal department to know how to go through all those forms properly and what's the latest statutes and all of that.
Absolutely.
So having that, again, filling that gap between what are we seeing happening on the national level, but how does it connect to me right in Hamilton County? How do I access it? I can't go to Columbus, I can't go to DC.
Right.
Um, and having one place, I'll bring people back to fiveonethreereleaf.org.
That's right.
That's still the place, go look there. Um, if you're not sure what's available, go look there.
Absolutely. And I want to also say, small businesses and right now we've got grants out for nonprofits. A lot of people say, I'm a nonprofit, what do you have available? So again, fiveonethreereleaf.org, uh, we've got six million dollars that we put out to help nonprofits because we've got to keep the engine going. Uh, we've got to keep the engine going uh to keep people being able to, to live and to work as well in our county. And this is very important. So uh we've got grants for nonprofits as well. So again, fiveonethreereleaf.org, it has everything.
Now, on a completely different note, um, there's another project that you got started on last year. I think we're gonna see more of it, uh, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame.
Yes.
Tell me about that.
I'm very excited about it. Um, as you know, on the Ohio Riverbanks, many people may not know, but the county, we own both stadiums. Uh, so we got two stadiums and on there we've got restaurants and, and, and entertainment and even workflow. We have a new music center, the Andrew Brady uh Music Center, it used to be Icon, they just changed the name. And one of the things, we, we host the Cincinnati uh Music Festival. It's the oldest African-American music festival in the country. And it is the second largest. And what people may not know, it's also our number one festival every year to bring in money, a hundred and seven million dollars of economic impact. And we're hoping and excited, hopefully, that it will be coming back this year. And so what we said that, we have these big entertainers that come in. Uh, I grew up in the music industry, my mother was a singer, she unfortunately passed away from breast cancer. But I understood music and my father uh had his own record label. So I grew up learning about the history and seeing some of these artists. But now I'm like, well, where do you find it? And these are artists who are from this area, but also impacted music all over the world. And other people are taking credit for our creative folks. And I said, you know, what's missing is this uh legacy. We've got the Andrew Brady uh Center, Icon Music Center, and they're uh got a lot of folks that they're bringing to town and, and, but we were missing that African-American component in terms of a permanent space that we could take back what is ours. These are people that came from here. Uh, and document the contributions that were made. And they will help new artists that are out here who may, you know, say, I might want to give up on my dream because I don't know if I can do it, but they see, wait a minute, Bootsy Collins, not only do I see a star for Bootsy Collins, these are gonna be just like the Hollywood stars. Uh, but also let me do a QR code on my phone and I can learn his, the ups and the downs and what he had to do to achieve his dreams. And so we've uh inducted four founding members, Bootsy Collins being one, of course, Rock and Roll Hall of Famer Bootsy Collins, Otis Williams of The Charms, who created the Duop Sound from King Records, and uh Dr. Charles Fold of the Dr. Charles Fold Singers, he's passed away, but he's the first to win a Grammy uh from here and in the gospel community. And we also, the Isley Brothers, who, you know, they're still selling a lot of records. And so those are the two, four founding members. We had induction ceremony and, but the bigger thing is that we're gonna build this interactive uh Walk of Fame that is going to be right across from Paul Brown Stadium where the music festival takes place. It'll connect you to the Andrew Brady uh Music Center. And it's gonna be, my goal is for it to be interactive, to be a tourism. It's a tourism infrastructure project that will create a music corridor on the banks that the whole world could come and see and, uh, you know, book those hotels and bring money back to the county. So we're very excited about that. Uh, but again, this idea came from the community. Lincoln Ware, who has been in radio for over fifty-plus years and helped break some of these records, these uh people's records that went on. He said, why can't we have this? And Otis Williams uh of the, of The Charms, he said, he's eighty-five, I believe now. And I wanted him to be able to live to see this happen. Um, they're currently over at the uh airport, the Stars.
Okay.
Uh, so if you're traveling, stop by Baggage Claim, you can't miss it. And this is again, partnership. So now we're partnering with the Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. And when I was over there, uh, someone didn't know who I was and the lady says, oh my gosh, she, she worked there. You have to see the Stars when you come back. And I said, really? She says, yes, I'm in Kentucky and I haven't been across the river in six years. She said, but I can't wait for it to open so I could come over there and see it because I love music. So this is the kind of stuff we want to see and we're very excited about this. You know, I come from tourism, so I'm always trying to, you know.
What a great interaction. That's, that's, you can't have scripted that any better. Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yes, so I'm excited about that and I think it's something uh that will be world-renowned. Uh, Nashville is a, from a tourism standpoint, is a major competitor. And they have, you know, the music, they've got the African-American, National African-American Music uh Museum. And they, they market that a lot. And we're saying, hold on, we got something too. Come on and book your conventions here in Hamilton County and then Cincinnati, Forest Park. We've got what you need right here.
I, I love it from a tour, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely a fan of bringing in more tourism. Um, I also love it though for local residents growing up and saying, hey, that comes from here. You live in a city and in a county that created these people. These people came out of here. Um, and you can also be one of these people.
That's right.
And uh to, to grow up walking on those stars and looking at those stars and knowing this is where um, there's a lot of great things that come out of Hamilton County and those are, and that's one of them, is the music and that music history that, like you said, it's been sort of co-opted by some other cities.
Yes.
Um, but there's a lot of that history that's really from here.
Right, we're taking it back. We're taking our history and our legacy back. And uh I'm just so excited about it. We've been able to also have, you know, private support for Procter &amp; Gamble and just, you know, just been a great partnership of people that said, hey, let's do this.
So the last thing I want to mention, because it's kind of how the year wrapped up, is there's a new budget.
There's a new budget.
Um, when you look at that budget, what are you most excited to see in there?
You know, I'm very proud of it. This is my first budget with the county and I'm extremely proud of it. I think it, it hits a, it's, I call it a people's budget because it helps the people of Hamilton County. Uh, for example, we have a million-dollar fund for senior citizens. Senior citizens could not qualify, a lot of them, for the relief because they got social security. But even though I get a social security check, my gas and electric went up and my water went up. So how am I gonna pay this? So we creating this one million dollar fund to help senior citizens. Uh, we also are creating within that fund an additional, an ombudsman type of person that can help make sure low income and uh be more inclusive of seniors who've kind of felt like maybe I didn't know or they were left behind. Uh, in addition to that, I'm very excited, obviously, for the uh affordable uh housing that'll be first ever, that we're putting in at thirty, forty million, but it'd be thirty-five million. Uh, we've got a team looking at how do we do that? And I want to have an interactive map so we'll know we've done this, we've done that, here's what we've created. So I'm excited to get started uh on that. Youth, a lot of people say, hey, we've got to support our youth and I'm all about that. Uh, we now will have a youth office of employment and development that will have a fellowship program. You're gonna get excited about this. A paid internship and fellowship program. And the fellowship kind of got that from the state where they were the Blue Jackets, you come out of college, you're not quite ready, you don't know if this is what you want to do or not, but you would have one year of getting paid and you'll be able to go to the different areas in county government and work in them. And that helps us with recruitment and helps you kind of understand what is it that you want to do as a career. Uh, obviously internship and co-op for people who are still in the school area. And then for those who are teens, I want to have, when I was at city council, I had over two thousand teens every year in, in jobs. If we can, I always say, we have to get our program to the youth before the street program gets to the youth. And so if you keep them in positive, with positive people, positive role models, then that's the direction that we're, hopefully, will be going. So uh I'm excited about that, but we'll have a report out, how many youth did we help? Uh, what can we do better? I really want to start measuring these things. Uh, the Office of Small Business I told you about, the goal is to put together a plan. How do we become number one in small business? Uh, what do we need to do to become number one with small business? So I'm very excited about these things that are in the budget. These are things that all of us have initiatives that we want to push forward. Uh, we are all, each of us are individually elected, a lot of people don't know that. Um, we, each are individually elected, so we have to be accountable. And we bring those ideas to the table and then we try to move forward. It's very difficult. Uh, the most difficult thing about this job is we can't talk to each other. And I've never been in any other job where I can't have any talking. So the only time we could talk is when we're public, on TV. Uh, so sometimes that makes difficulties because when you're negotiating back and forth, uh, usually you don't see that part, but now you see it because we have to be, we can't talk to each other. But I'm very uh pleased with it. I started something in nineteen ninety-nine when I first, my first election uh for city council. I said, hey, you know, most corporations and nonprofits, they have to do what they call an annual report. And we get elected, I thought, wow, we should have an annual report. And so I created Report to the People. Now, back then we did have the social media, barely, I don't even know if we had the internet yet. Uh, but um I did it and someone at my church handed me an original copy. And it's in black and white and typing and all of that. I thought I was really doing a great job then, right? And she handed it to me and it triggered me to say, wait a minute, I've been doing this these years, I've got to do one. So we're doing a lot better and that's why I'm glad you had me on. But this is the reason I have a Report to the People. Um, people can get a hard copy, they can contact my office, get a hard copy. Or we can email because now we able to do email, electronic. But it gives you kind of a sense where this is what she said and here's what we've done. And certainly twenty-two is more work to do, but you could kind of see at twenty, uh, twenty-one, we did a lot of work. The bus, we measure it. We don't just say, oh, this is what we think. We help, we helped over four thousand people. Eighteen million dollars was given out uh to help with people to stay in their homes and rental assistance. Uh, seven hundred businesses actually got helped, over six million dollars has been distributed uh to help small businesses. So it has kind of that uh report. Fifteen hundred people got the vaccination from the efforts of the bus. So we have community impacts, uh, we give you data, uh, and then we tell you, you know, we got more to do, but here's what has happened so far. And I think uh that helps because then people feel like, well, maybe the ideas I did give you, oh, these were implemented. Or, oh yeah, I wanted you to do this and this is what happened. Um, so those are the kinds of things that I think uh was very important and that's why I wanted to have this Report to the People that people can have.
Which is great because as we only are briefly touching on things.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure someone watching is thinking, um, I'd like, I'd like more info, I'd like some numbers, I'd like more details. Um, you can have this report mailed to you. If you just can't look at anything else online ever again, you're done with it. You can have a paper copy mailed to you. Um, and they can just call your office?
Yes, they can call our office at uh five-one-three-nine-four-six-four-four-zero-one.
Okay, and of course it can, you can find it online.
You can find it online. Online is great because it has the videos, you get to see a Relief-a-thon, you get to see some of the, the things that we do. You get to see, uh, there's a great video on the bus. It shows all the different locations and what happened there. And it's um, is, you know, you get to see some of those things. And so we try our hardest to communicate. We want to do the work, but we also want to communicate with the voters and uh, oh, here's what happened. And sometimes if you got an idea, give it to us. You never know when the idea, a lot of these, this came from people and I just brought those ideas back. We've been able to also do some great community things, uh, breast cancer awareness. For the first time, we have a breast cancer awareness day and it was so many women uh and men that showed up in pink. We're gonna continue those things because someone brought it up and obviously my mother passed away from it. But someone brought it up, I said, you know what, let's do that. Uh, so there's a lot of different things in each of us.
Oh gosh, then there's more in there, uh, we, we just hit.
Yeah, you hit a lot.
We hit a lot, actually.
You went through the whole thing of them.
But there's more in there, so you definitely want to take a look at the details in there.
Yes.
Um, and I think if there's one takeaway, well, okay, if, we'll give two takeaways. The first one is fiveonethreereleaf.org.
Yes.
That's the first takeaway. If you're not sure what program or how to get help, or maybe you think there should be a program, start there. Uh, but also the biggest takeaway I'm seeing is uh all of these programs started with someone calling the Hamilton County Commissioners and saying, we need this.
Right.
Um, and then you said, thanks, now we know that we need this. Um, so that is how we as residents get involved in our county government. Um, it's local, it's right here, it's accessible. Um, you can call it, you can email, you can go downtown and say hello and, um, I mean, I'd call first to make sure they're there. Um, and so I just want to thank you for coming in and, and being connected to us that way.
Thank you and thank you for all that you do and partnership and help us get the word out on what is available, how to connect to it. And again, it, you know, testing, I didn't get to hit on that, but we put money, more money into testing. So we're trying to get these test sites up. So, you know, we're doing the best, the best that we can. Uh, but if you got an idea, give us a call.
Absolutely, well, thank you. And thank you for watching. That means you wanted to be informed about what's happening in your county and we will see you next time.